By my vision, it is 7 o'clock. Okay, so we'll bring the meeting to order. And we'll have an of the, let's see, I read that first. With a regular meeting agenda, July 12th, 7:00 PM at City Hall. I want you to have roll call and...
Thank you, Chairman DeVoe. Here?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Watson? Mr. Brown? For the record, Ms. Kerik is absent. Ms. Good? Mr. Hartfield?
Here.
Mr. Penland?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
And Mr. Schrader?
Here.
We have a quorum this evening with seven, eight members present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions or comments on the minutes of the last meeting? Hearing any objections. Now, we hear somebody that will approve those and we'll get a second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as proposed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearings. Consider ordinance number 1324 amending Woodland Park Municipal Code 18.06.578 and 18.09.090.V for mini storage warehouse L. It's okay, it's after seven. Okay, so who's going to present this?
I will present, Mr. Chairman. I do have a brief PowerPoint.
Very good.
All right. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. We are here to discuss self-storage facilities in the city of Woodland Park, specifically ordinance number 1324, series 2018, and ordinance amending Woodland Park Municipal Code, section 1806.578, and subsection 1809.090V3 regarding mini storage warehouse use. A draft of the ordinance was attached to the staff report, and we will discuss that in detail. So today is July 12th, 2018. It is the Planning Commission public hearing on this draft ordinance tonight. You will recall, we've had a couple of work sessions on this topic, and we also began on April 12th with a public hearing on a previous draft of this ordinance. So, based on the discussions we had at that public hearing on April 12th and the June 14th and May 10th hearings, work sessions, excuse me, we have before you a severely reduced and revised draft dealing with recreational vehicles and the storage thereof tonight. And this is the public hearing for that item. So this is a proposed code amendment to the zoning code of the City of Woodland Park Municipal Code. There are a couple of items that it addresses, and they were outlined in your staff report, and I'll briefly highlight them right now. The first and most substantive item that this ordinance addresses is the elimination of the 300 square foot maximum compartment size in the mini storage warehouse section of the use matrix. That's section 1809.090V3A. And what that section specified was that the maximum size of a compartment for a self-storage mini warehouse compartment was 300 square feet, and staff is proposing through this ordinance to eliminate that altogether. So that is really the most substantive change that this ordinance is proposing. Other changes include changing the self-storage mini warehouse use from a permitted use in the heavy service commercial light industrial zone district to a conditional use. And the difference there is it changes and shifts from administrative approval to an approval that then has to come in front of this Planning Commission and in front of council for final approval as a conditional use permit. So there is more review and a chance for this commission to weigh in on all self-storage facilities if we make this change. The other change we're proposing is a change more to the label and the reference of these types of facilities. Currently, we refer to them as mini storage facilities, mini storage warehouses, and staff believes that a more appropriate label would be self-storage warehouse. So that change is being proposed in section 1809.090V3 as well as the definition section, which is 1806.578. And then we are correcting a typo in the PUD zone district of section 1809.090V3. Right now, it just says C for conditional under the PUD zone district. And to be consistent with all of the other zone districts for PUD, it should say PC, which is permitted conditionally. So the conditions for a PUD, as we discussed in the past, are established and set up as part of the PUD process. And that's what that means. So there are a few other miscellaneous changes, and I'll get into those in just one or two slides. I wanted to talk a little bit about the advantages and the benefits of this code change. I know we've had three meetings to discuss this, but I just wanted to recap. Staff believes that this code change does fill a gap. We continue to get and have received numerous inquiries about RVs, storage, rental, all kinds of questions about camping in RVs, everything related to RVs. And that's where this zone code change emanated from. But as we see before you now, it has been narrowed down and is very specific to just the storage compartment size, really. And it would allow for the storage of RVs, boats, trailers, and large items that are considered personal property. So staff does believe that this will address a need that we're seeing in the community, both from a residential need for the citizens of this city as well as a commercial need for the industry, the self-storage industry. We believe it will provide opportunities and greater flexibility for the storage industry and for the commercial businesses and for residents alike. Also, we believe that the increase in review by this Planning Commission standardizes and reduces conflict for all self-storage facilities when they're being considered. So they all now have to come in front of this Planning Commission, which is greater consistency, greater transparency, and we believe will produce a better result. So there are benefits and advantages to these code changes, and we hope you agree with those benefits and advantages. So again, we are changing the definition, which is section 1806.578, removing the mini storage reference, changing that to self-storage, and removing the household materials reference and changing that to personal property to be consistent with other sections where it's related. This is section 1809.090V3. This is from our use matrix in the zoning code. This is the row that deals with wholesale, trade, distribution, warehousing, and storage uses. And you can see V3 is the self-storage use and all of the conditions associated with that. So again, we've changed any reference to mini to self-storage. We've changed the P to a C for a conditional use in the heavy service commercial light industrial zone district. And we've added the P in front of the C for permitted conditionally in the PUD zone districts, which is just a miscellaneous change, really. We are also using the personal property reference that's in this section in the definition. So that's where the consistency is coming in, which was a suggestion of this commission, actually. This is 3A, and we are proposing to eliminate in its entirety, 3A, which is the 300 square foot limitation on the compartment size of these self-storage compartments. And then we're changing some of the labels. Since we've gotten rid of A, we've got to relabel some of these. Again, that's a miscellaneous change. We are also, as a miscellaneous change, removing any potential conflicts related to the clause in B. And B reads, "The use of storage compartments shall be limited to the storage of personal property, and no other use shall be permitted except a manager's office or residence, which is clearly incidental to the principal use." Staff believes this is no longer necessary and is redundant and is confusing in its interpretation. And it was even discussed by this commission to potentially fix that, and this is our fix for it, is to remove it. We're also looking just to reword some of item 3C, which is now B. So it read in the past, "There shall be no outside storage of goods or materials of any type on the site." And I think I've clarified it by stating simply, "Storage of personal property shall be within an enclosed building." And that's consistent with the definition for self-storage facility or self-storage warehouse. On C, we changed the word site to lot. We actually have a definition for lot, and a site is a little bit more ambiguous and unclear. And we've added, inserted the word self-storage before warehouse just to be consistent in some of our references, to be absolutely clear. So those are the changes as proposed in the ordinance. So tonight, we are here for the Planning Commission public hearing and deliberation on this draft ordinance. And this commission will make a recommendation to City Council. It is scheduled for first reading. The ordinance is scheduled for first reading in front of City Council on August 2nd. And second reading and public hearing is looking, we're looking to schedule that for August 16th on this draft ordinance. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Are there any questions of staff?
There are no other places in the municipal code that address RV storage, are there?
Not that I remember.
Thank you. I didn't think so.
No, you can store an RV on your property. You can have an RV on your property, one RV. You can store it in the garage, but that doesn't need a special use category or anything. It's just your stuff.
But this in no way prevents outdoor commercial storage.
No, this is all enclosed.
All this does is give the latitude to the developer to the project be approved, if I understand it, to enlarge the storage areas in the structure. He or she wants to do that to accommodate indoor storage of RVs.
Correct. This is all related to enclosed storage.
One question I have on number 47A. Use of storage compartments. That rebuilding does a pod compartment. That's how we do it. Load a pod, use semi-trailers.
Yeah, well, the storage compartment isn't related to the type of building. It's just the area for the storage unit. So...
Do you change that to area?
Use of the storage compartment.
What I don't want to see is a whole bunch of pods being brought up.
Pod being personal property, they have to be enclosed.
It's all going to be inside of one of their buildings.
We don't, pods are not considered buildings. And this is a building. And we don't allow pods unless they're just for a very short period of time when someone is moving in or out of their home. Then they sometimes use those just on a very short temporary basis. No.
Remember, they've got that air-conditioned main storage building that people can store stuff in there at a temperature. That could be a compartment put in there of personal property.
And every one of these sites will come through a review process for the building.
When referring to pods, we're also talking about shipping containers or similar closures. I notice this ordinance is pretty well focused on personal property. In past other cities, my firms have a lot of storage of documents. And so if I were to have that need, I could not store my professional documents in the building as part of my company.
No, we have a provision, we have another line item in the matrix that's labeled V4, and that's for professional business office storage warehouse. And that's the category you want to operate that type of business in.
So something was built under the self-storage. They couldn't lease to the space to a commercial entity.
Unless they have requested for a certain portion to be professional business as well.
Ken, do you remember across from the high school, all those storage units? You seen the guys out there with 2x4s and building cabinets and that? Because that's, they can't afford to have buildings, so they're using power tools and building out. And right in front of those areas, that's their building. I think this prevents that.
But this is addressing storage and not other operations taking place?
Right.
But there is a need for commercial storage, and I'm not sure that's addressed in the city elsewhere.
We do have a line item, and that would be a conditional...
Are there any facilities in town that would accommodate commercial storage on a self-storage basis?
Yes. I haven't processed one in the last 15 years, but there are some that are grandfathered, so to speak.
Wouldn't Carter have a whole? Carter's got quite a few of those that they use in that respect. I mean, they use them for commercial. I don't know what they sign them up for, but they're across from the high school. They're over there on 67. They have a lot of stuff there that pickup trucks with signs on the side are getting in there and starting their day and all that stuff. So I think that's commercial.
And they were probably built many, many decades ago.
Yeah, so they're grandfathered, I would think.
Well, um...
Do I have a big issue?
We don't, yeah. We don't, except when it's associated with a campground. Read the definition of campground. Someone can have their RV stay at the campground but not be occupied through the winter.
Does this mean that we will not allow open storage of RVs?
Yes. Yes. As a permanent lot for open storage of RVs. No.
Have to be enclosed, have to be inside the closing.
How long does a vehicle, RV, need to be parked before it becomes storage and just not parked? Is there a timeframe when it becomes a stored vehicle versus just a, I'll be traveling through town, parking at Walmart? And is there a time duration? When it becomes stored versus just parked in transit?
I had my neighbor, he had a question. Someone had an RV that they parked out. About to be at their house. And complaining about it. I don't recall it's that likely. But they're not allowed on public streets?
If it's on a public street for more than 72 hours, then it's in violation of the parking ordinance. But on private property, it depends. I mean, you can store an RV on your personal property for as long as you like, but you can't have more than one in the residential zones.
I keep all my camping equipment in one of my rented storage spaces. I take my RV over there to unload the things. I'm not leaving until the morning. I leave it there overnight. Is that storage or is it parking?
If you're leaving it overnight at the warehouse, that would be storage. And it can't be, can't remain outside.
How long can I do it? I mean, there's no timeframe defined.
Yeah, and it's really not an issue. I mean, if we get a complaint, if your landlord allows you to do that, he would be the one, the manager of the storage units would be the one who would be concerned about that. So, I mean, I hate to regulate down to the nitty-gritty kinds of things. If we get a call that someone's got RVs out on their self-storage facility for multiple nights or even one night, we would call the facility and say, "All storage for RVs has to be inside, closed." And there's no timeline. If we get a call and a complaint.
Are there any fines? Like if they do not, say they start storing 20 RVs outside?
There are.
What are the repercussions? Is there anything spelled out here saying, "I'm getting $50 a month for 20 vehicles being parked outside of my storage area, but the fines only $50 total for the month." This is still a pretty big money chunk.
We would enforce the zoning code like we enforce any other section of the zoning code. So this section would be no different. And there are fines that are applicable. There's court proceedings that would occur, and there's the revocation of this conditional use permit that you would need to get for this. I mean, there's multiple opportunities and avenues. And there could even be prison time. They would be summoned... Never come to that. ...into court for a violation and appear before the municipal court judge.
Let me see if I understand this correctly. We're only talking about service commercial, community commercial, and the other two, PUD and heavy service commercial. The other ones are not allowed.
Correct.
So, except they have $72 if they can park theirs on the street. But if they want to put it on their property, they can do that. Is that fair?
Yes.
That's the way I understand it. They can't do the rest of these. It's only allowed in four areas. Okay? Isn't that clear, though?
In an enclosed building.
But not on their own property? No.
I'm not...
Because it doesn't apply. If they haven't parked them next to their house, they're fine, one.
For a recreation vehicle, yes.
Doesn't it have to be enclosed?
Correct.
Correct. That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay. What minutia are we getting hung up on? That's what I'm trying to figure out. So whatever you're doing, you got 72 hours or you're out?
On the street.
Oh, so I think that's how that applies, correct?
On the street.
Right.
Parking within the right-of-way.
Right.
For anything.
72 hours.
Right.
I don't care whether they're called storage, anything, 72 hours.
You have, yes. A vehicle that's parked on the street for 72 hours. It is a difficult thing to enforce because someone will say, "Well, I've just moved my car three minutes ago." And then the 72 hours starts over again.
I don't think that's been a problem. Has it been with the police or with coenforcement?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
We have to mark tires.
Does that make it clear, Mike? Okay, just trying to get a clarification. If I'm understanding it correctly. Anybody else have questions? Yes. Since there is a benefit advantage slide and there's no disadvantage slide, does staff see absolutely no disadvantages to this?
No, no disadvantages. We believe this is an opportunity that is beneficial to both the citizens and residents and the industry.
Jerry, no opinion doesn't count. That's what they're saying. Does staff really think that people that are storing their RVs and trailers and boats and everything else on their personal property free, that they will be moving into a facility that would be like this to pay for it? Which would help clean up Woodland Park a little bit? Do you really think that's going to happen?
Some will. Yes, we do believe that will happen. And we believe what will also happen is people will move a lot of this stuff inside their garage. That'll help clean up the city a little bit, too.
You're talking about RVs and stuff? Why would somebody move an RV inside their garage if, whether they have this facility or not? I don't think this facility has anything to do with that.
If they have more than one RV, they would move a second one inside.
Only if we, only if it's enforced. You drive around town, you see all kinds of stuff. In fact, coming over here, I saw about four violations just driving over here.
We do enforce them. If you lodge a complaint, we will be following up on those complaints. It's complaint-driven.
But at the end of the day, it's really a customer development that sees this, or learn that. Here she may see opportunity to open water spaces. Here she may not. If you want 400 square feet, it's got a 300, you may not want it. So it just gives, it strikes me as it gives the developer a lot more flexibility, which is a good thing, to custom-design a storage unit that he or she believes needs of not just this community, but maybe some people in this community that have a viable business. That's really all we're doing.
I think what we're doing is we're putting an RV storage facility for Colorado Springs and Woodland Park. That's what I think we're doing.
Is there anything we could take, like a baby step and first take a look at doing 400 square feet? That's what? She felt that there's a need there? And then see how kind of feet that would get? And if there really is an issue?
Why don't we go to the signs of the storage? We figure it's the public's, you know, I kind of like know the logic behind doing that.
The logic behind it is somebody must have thought really hard to put 300 square feet in one part. Can't keep on changing the rules because somebody doesn't want it like it is.
I haven't heard a good explanation of why the other isn't needed. I don't know.
I don't know how... I don't know how hard they thought about it, Vicki. I think this was an old regulation that just kept getting moved and moved. And the industry has changed, and the needs have changed, and we haven't kept up with it. I think 300 square feet might be arbitrary now and not necessary.
If you would take a 40 or 47-foot motor coach, and that's what a lot of them are, that's the size they are, and you take that times maybe a building that's 50-foot long and maybe 15 to 20 feet wide, you're 700, 800 square feet. You're not 300. And that's part of the reasons of what they're doing. The people that have those don't want them hailed on. They don't want to load them up with snow. And for the small ones, like you might have a pop-up at home or something like that, the same thing works. What is going to, what's going to decide whether people come in there is how much they charge for it. If it's too expensive, they won't rent them.
They'll have a variety.
If they're in the market area, and it's a fair price, and the market sets that rate, they'll do that. And people will take them up on that. So the market will determine a lot of that, is what will happen.
I'm sure you'll see 300-square-foot compartment sizes anyway, whether we have a limitation or not. But now you'll have an opportunity to see some larger ones. So it'll be a variety of opportunities.
The reality of it, all these projects have to be important. So if the committee running, which doesn't like design, or whatever, that means there'll be a lot of them without getting too many compartments. Second, they have to have space there. Serve a market. Without excessive oversight, obviously. But we believe in the regulations.
Any questions? If not, what we'll do is we'll open the, open the public comment. Does anybody want to talk about this?
Yes.
Name, address, social security number, so forth.
Pete LeBarre, 750 East US Highway 24, 000000000. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. I do have just, I think there is a negative, and I'll, I'll point it out. And obviously, this is, this is the guy who's in the guillotine looking up and saying, "Why isn't it falling?" And saying, "Oh, there's a problem." I think the one, the one issue that I see as a drawback to having larger-sized units is you have larger garage doors. And if you have a complex that is only those, then you have, you possibly could have design, uh, design issues with how that appears, with hangar doors or, you know, any one of a number of things. So that I could see as a, as a, as a negative. Having said that, I want to go back to this issue of personal property storage because I think it's, I think it's an issue that probably can be solved very easily tonight. If you recall, or maybe you don't know this, but most businesses pay what's called personal property tax. And they pay tax on all kinds of things and all types of equipment that they use in their business. So if you're using this term "personal property," that isn't just you and me as Joe Bagadonuts taking my household storage and putting it in. It really does apply for use of business because businesses have personal property. And to limit, and, and, you know, again, I've got, I've got a dog in this fight, to limit and say, "Well, Ken's going to bring his, uh, his architectural plans and store them in our conditioned space." He can't do that. Number one, how are you going to police it? Number two, do you really care? I think the intent is to keep businesses from operating in the storage, not from storing things. If you want to clean out your closets, we want to be able to store what's in your closet. If you want to clean out your file cabinets, we want to be able to store that as well. We'll have, and any good business that's doing this will have restrictions on what can be stored, you know, such as hazardous materials, volatile materials, things that could do damage not just to what's stored in there, but to the building and to, to the occupants', uh, stuff in there. So as part of the pecker, uh, part of the public record, I would like a better clarification because we do have a project that's been approved. And we want to be able to store business items and personal, uh, individual property. So, uh, but not be restricted, not have to worry about policing, "Hey, I need to go out and see what you're bringing in today. Is that from your business or is that from your home?" Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Volpe, do you want to play public tonight? You always ask a question at this time. Okay. No, I'm not a judge, but that's okay. Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will close for public comment. Rebuttal for the applicant? We already had that. Any final questions?
There's just one comment. The way you stated the storage as business and personal, I always looked at it that way. Even though it said "personal property," I always felt like there'd be a place for businesses, too, to put stuff. Because you could look at, you could actually look at it. You could actually look at it as the owner's personal property of his business. It's one way to look at it.
Pete, I guess the clarification I look for, you know, you can stay there, that's okay. Is that I don't want him having building material, he builds homes. That's not personal property. That's inventory. That's a different, that's a different situation than taking some file records and just cleaning out the back. And I don't know how you address that, but there is a difference in that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just, as I said- Right. So under Section B, wholesale, trade, distribution, warehousing, storage, under that use category, we have four different line items. One of them is mini storage warehouse, which is for the storage of personal property. And the definition, the way it was written, the way it is currently written, says household materials. And it has always been synonymous that household materials and personal property are household materials, not related to a business. If an operation wants to come in, like the one that we had come before us, they should have been applying for a conditional use permit for line item three, mini storage warehouse for personal property, and line item four for professional business and office storage as well. And that's how you would combine the uses into one facility. They did not. They only submitted an application for line item three, which was self-storage facility. Maybe that is how we clarify it in front of council. If you do want professional business and office storage in this facility, it needs to be a use that's applied for as part of the conditional use permit with any application, not just, not just the one we heard, but any application. That's how you pick and choose your uses in the matrix for a conditional use.
But the average unit, you will have the small business that will store personal and that. So maybe as an amendment to approving this is we add that to be included. Because-
It's already here.
It's already included?
It's already in the matrix.
Oh, I thought you were saying it wasn't in the matrix.
It's up to the applicant to request that.
And they already have?
In the application that came before us, they have not.
They do.
They only asked for self-storage facility. Mini warehouse, personal property.
So they need to modify something that we need to approve before it goes to council?
If they want to make that clear, they have an opportunity in front of city council to add that as a use, to make it perfectly clear that you want professional.
And to help him support that, wouldn't it be proper for us to say that we would, that we would promote that as well? So it isn't just limited to that, whether it looks like it's an add-on when they go there? What do you think?
Right. Correct. That application has already come before you, and they have an opportunity now at the public hearing in front of council, and they can make their case then.
What's going to happen if it isn't added? People are just going to do it anyway. And that's how the life works with that. The business guy's going to rent it, he's going to write it off, he's going to put some of his furniture and the house in there, he's going to put his file cabinet. Period. That's what will happen. That's the real world.
That may happen?
That's what we'll take. No, it will happen.
And it would be considered a violation of their conditional use-
Okay, well, you, I want to see you enforce it by going through every one of those compartments. It's not going to happen. Not in the real world.
It would happen based on a complaint.
Complaint, yeah. You need to address that, so you got covered.
It's up to the applicant to make that request. If the applicant wants those types of uses, that's the whole process for the application. And we would review it as part of the application, notwithstanding what this applicant is doing. As Commissioner Hartsfield has said, right now before you is just these changes to this section of mini storage warehouse. And the other section is addressed. Business, office, professional storage is addressed. There's a use there. An applicant just has to pick that as part of his conditional use permit application, if that's the use they want.
So would one possibility be as we table this?
No, no, no.
We modify that, it comes back to us?
No, no, no.
So they don't put it like an exception?
No, no, no.
And make it confusing to the council?
What you're hearing tonight is a legislative item. Don't even think about the application that you've already reviewed.
Okay.
You've sent forward to city council. It's now up to the applicant, after tonight's discussion, to make a request to expand their request before a council.
Right.
Yes.
Haven't touched. Correct. Right, yes. And the opportunity and possibility exists to mix uses-
Combine.
-as an applicant comes in with an application. So the onus is on the applicant. In this case, this is just a legislative amendment. We're just changing the regulations to essentially, the essence of this is to eliminate that 300-square-foot compartment size. Which just opens the doors for larger-
Okay. Everybody got that? Ready to vote on it? Somebody want to make a motion?
Just the ordinance number is fine. 1324. As presented.
Just right here on the top of your back, back your front page. I'll second their motion. Any other questions at this point? Call for a question.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Good? Hartsfield?
Yes.
Henlon?
No.
Scanlin?
Yes.
And Schrader?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
One of the things that is waiting, thank you guys for coming. Okay.
And, and we would like to, staff would like to thank Lee Brown. He delved into this very closely and sent us some comments that we ran by the city attorney, and she concurred with these little tweaks. So to make it as clear as possible, when we have an opportunity with a legislative item like this to simplify and make it clear, that's what we want to do. So thank you, Mr. Brown.
Well, I think at this point in time, we're talking about a work session. We can do it from right up there.
We are.
One of the things that we can consider in our work session, think about this. Nobody is going to come in and say, "I want a business storage, uh, facility, storage up here by itself." Nobody's going to do that. It isn't big enough to do that. So maybe as we look at changes for the next year, what she's talked about is part of that would be combining those. Because why do we want to make somebody lie about what they're going to put in there? Why do we want to have the applicant, whoever does it, have to be complicit with that as well? When it's easy to say, "We don't want building materials, we don't want that." Because you got a file cabinet from your business, put it in there. Who would stop that? If you had stuff from, uh, from the furniture store and you wanted to store them or something like that, you have to go through a whole nother permit for that. Sure. We just need, we just need to clean up what's, where it is right now, that's all. Because it's too complex or too specific. Yep. Well, we're not adjourned. Are we going to adjourn? Do you have our reports first? No, see, she doesn't want to. We got to adjourn later. Okay. It's okay.
We're going to move into our work session, and we're still going to be streaming the meeting. So let's make sure that we just, one at a time, speak and understand that we do have an audience that in this section of our work session is about discussing possible code amendments. And in front of you is a matrix that we put together many years ago to kind of track what needs to be tweaked in the municipal code that could be fairly easy to do and of a high priority versus down to a more difficult code amendment. And having been just through one, it seemed more difficult. And maybe a low priority. So that's the way this chart is filled out. But since this was put together several years ago, we have completed many of these items on this list with Laura's good work and others. And we did have a discussion back in December of 2017. And at that time, there were a number of priorities that came up that the planning commission wanted us to research. So I just wanted to go through this chart. Sorry. And let you know that the check marks show where we have done most of the easy things so far, which is changing the code so that if you have a residence in a commercial zone, you can convert to a residential use in a commercial zone, one to two units administratively. We have not tackled the domestic fowl or the chicken regulations. Those were written very strictly and did not allow for any variances in the location of a coop. We have since, in our administration of those regulations, realized that these coops really may, on a certain lot, be best set in a different location, and perhaps a variance process would be applicable to certain lots. So we haven't made that change. The non-conforming uses, uh, the charter was changed by a vote of the people that if you have a non-conforming use that then does not exist for at least a year or more, it goes away in perpetuity. That has been modified in the text of the code. And then the last so-called easy and fairly high priority was to change final plats to administrative approvals. And the reason for that, right now, we have townhome and condominium plats that are administrative. And they're really sort of the as-built of a project. It's all, the important planning for a subdivision is done with the preliminary plat, which does come before the planning commission and the city council. And then the developer moves into construction. And really, the final plat is more of a perfunctory-type activity as an as-built to that preliminary plat. So even though it's called preliminary, somewhat of a misnomer, it's really the most important step. And the final plat is, is really the recorded document for that. But, um, you know, that's a fairly big leap for Woodland Park to go to the final plats being administratively processed. However, in big cities, that is normally the approach that they use. And tonight, I'm, I'm not asking for you to really give us direction of what we should work on first or next. We'll do that when we have our next work session, and you can kind of absorb all of this information. And you're also going to have your exercise of going through the comprehensive plan priorities so that you might, you know, direct staff to focus on different areas. But I wanted to bring you up to speed this evening about what has been accomplished and what is still open out there for the future. So still going down the column of easy, we have added the horse standards back into the code. Those were unfortunately dropped, just, we think, by a oversight. But that has been added back in, so those standards are fine. added back in, so those standards are fine. And then under the lower priority is to update preliminary plat section so that the review criteria is very specific right now. It doesn't say that a traffic study has to be submitted, for example. We do request that because there is a section that says, and any other city engineer required documents, but we think that the preliminary plat section could be worked on. And then we have sometimes encroachments to city rights of way. And we'd like to add a section that has a revocable permit for that type of encroachment. Under the medium column, which was a somewhat high priority, was to remove the possibility of speculative grading. We think that having, issuing a grading permit for just prepping property is not always the wisest thing to do. It should be in conjunction with a feasible development plan in order to do grading because I have seen where someone will grade and then they change their minds. And we've lost the trees, we've lost the terrain. So it's not very clear as to whether we can deny a grading permit based on just the fact that it's speculative grading. Our next one deals with trash cans being placed in the right-of-way or out for garbage pickup overnight. This is a bear provision so that we can prohibit or not encourage bears into our community. We attached to your packet is a draft nuisance code that was worked on this last winter. We don't have in our regulations a standard nuisance section. So I shared that with you primarily as informational, that we are going to try to address not only this issue of garbage being placed out on the curb for an extended period of time, but also the feeding of wildlife, animal waste disposal as well, noxious weeds, plant management or the height of mowing weeds and snow removal and providing for definitions. So this ordinance, both Rick Circa, our code enforcement official, and Eric Disman, who was our intern last winter, worked on looking at other communities. And most of this language is in sections that's not the zoning regulations. So you would not necessarily see this come before you because it's in other sections of the municipal code. Your purview is only with zoning and subdivisions and flood hazard permits and mobile home parks. So that would, those four titles are the only ones that you would see a legislative item, but it's important for you to know that we're working on these issues in order to tighten up these other sections and add to it.
Are we adding things like cam handling or any of that, taking that up under the nuisance law?
Not under the nuisance law. That would be more the law enforcement area. And we could have Miles DeYoung, our chief of police, come share some information about that. So the next one here is the temporary use permits. And we just recently, LoR had passed a, or presented a code that would allow any event that, well, you saw it too. You just had this. And council did pass it so that any event that is after nine PM, they have a successful first year, then in the future years, those can be approved administratively. So that streamlined that process ever so slightly. The accessory structures in the community or in the commercial zones was also a recent amendment that also defined setbacks. And that's been a wonderful addition, great clarity on that. Under the medium section, we need to look at our public notice section, eighteen sixty-nine, and zoning amendments. This is a section of the code that talks about both changing the zoning map or the zoning classifications of particular property, plus making text amendments. And they're intertwined. And so it really needs, this section, eighteen sixty-nine, needs to be pulled apart so that we're talking about text amendments in one section and map amendments in another section as opposed to having them intertwined. So that's why that's on this. The accessory dwelling units, that was added in 2014. We have issued maybe about six ADUs under this code. It's very complicated. The code has separation distances and calculations for a certain percentage of ADUs in a certain area. And so we think that it could actually be streamlined a little bit further, but that's a whole nother discussion for all of you. We have mapped the grandfathered ADUs. There are about twenty-eight of those in the community right now. So we're not seeing a big rush to add mother-in-law units. And this is partially because the building code is very restrictive on a mother-in-law unit. You are basically creating a totally separate unit like a duplex. And it has its firewalls, it has to have its own heating system, venting system. And so it's not as simple as we originally thought to create a second kitchen and living facility within a dwelling unit. So we're not seeing as many as we thought we might, primarily because it is quite an extent of retrofitting an existing home, whether people, it's easier to build from the ground up if you're planning on doing a mother-in-law unit. Then we're also seeing where covenants are not allowing these. So particularly, we ran into this over at Stone Ridge where a gentleman wanted to add an ADU in his basement and the covenants won't allow it.
Question. If somebody has a mother they have to take care of and they're going to come to live with you.
Mm-hmm.
Let's say you've got a lower level of your house and you've already got a bedroom down there.
Mm-hmm.
She can obviously go down and live there because you're not creating a mother-in-law unit.
Absolutely.
Even though it is a unit for mother-in-law to live in.
Yes, you're not adding a full kitchen to the basement. That's what triggers the ADU.
You can have a partial kitchen.
You can have a partial kitchen. It's the stove that creates the full kitchen.
Microwave?
You can have a microwave.
Infrared? I'm just teasing, but I'm saying is the way you, the reason you don't get very many people, they just go a different route.
Yes.
Is what they're doing.
Sure. Yep.
That they're doing. Yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
You'll have a place for it.
Back in 2017, we did add, talked about amending the mobile home park standards. These were developed in nineteen sixty-nine. They're actually not too, too bad, but it would be better to update those. And these are actually called manufactured homes, not mobile homes. So that would be a suggestion. Under the medium category, lower priority is an increase of maximum height allowed in the public semi-public. And this is, we had a variance that we had to take forward for the aquatic center, for example, in a semi-public public zone. And it's limited at thirty feet right now. And usually in these public zones, you could have taller buildings. There's usually commercial buildings associated with it and that's a thirty-five foot limit. But they do have the option to go for a variance. Add non-conforming structures section to the non-conforming use section, so that's a further clarification. The next item is amending the fence standards for setbacks so that there are no privacy fences within the front setback. And that's been accomplished. Under the hard area, the first one deals with amending the electronic message displays so that we have greater control over the brightness of those displays. Right now, our code allows up to a thousand nits and we need to have, unfortunately, we were misled, that's actually a daytime brightness, not a nighttime brightness. So it needs to be modified. The next one, it deals with weeds and grass in ditches and right-of-way. This is addressed in the nuisance code that you'll have a chance to take home and look at. The third in that column, yes.
I think that's a great idea as long as you put slash private slash city because they don't cut theirs.
Yeah, the city will have to look at.
Well, then it should be in the ordinance. They're the nuisance too.
Yeah. Why are these hard?
They're hard because of what John just talked about.
Right.
We have to look at the unintended consequences of some of these and make sure we are capable of being able to enforce and to follow the rules, our own rules. The city has to be able to follow our own rules as well. So we want to look at them pretty carefully and make sure we're not creating unintended consequences. The next one is requiring property owners to remove snow on the adjacent sidewalks to their property. Most communities have this rule in place and have had it in place for a long time. Woodland Park didn't have sidewalks until the last couple of decades, so it was never part of our code. And we'd like to have that in there. The next one, we can cross off because we're not going to create RV storage for outside storage. That was on this list and we put it out there and got the input appropriately from commission and from the community. So we've taken care of that with enclosed storage with tonight's action. And then the overall creation of a nuisance code that you can, certainly we'll discuss at our next workshop. In the medium priority under the hard list is to revise the variance section, eighteen point six zero, so that it is more clear. And the board of adjustment has standards that are very easy to review and determine the hardships that allow for exceptions to heights or setbacks or sizes of signs and other things. We did invite the board of adjustment to join us tonight for this work session. Fortunately, we don't have anyone here. They are looking at.
She never got asked? Oh, it was an email she was supposed to check.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And they have been, the board of adjustment has been dealing with quite a few of the corner lots in our older part of town, which are generally fifty feet wide, not very wide lots on one right-of-way and a hundred and fifty feet wide long on the second right-of-way. So they're seeing quite a few requests because it's very hard to meet a twenty-five foot setback on both of those street right-of-ways. And they're considering perhaps adding an exception that administratively, staff would be able to do those variances on those particular corner lots administratively, up to a certain amount of setbacks, say ten feet. So you'd still maintain a fifteen-foot setback on one side. And I think that's a good approach. It allows for infill so that these older lots in the older part of town can be used. And we're seeing some great products going into the older parts of town. The next one is very hard, which is the updating of the lighting code. And unfortunately, with the loss of Steve Standard, our expert, and we did start working on that, I'm especially, maybe we take some baby steps to start with because right now in our lighting code, we only have two sections that address lighting that simply say, thou shall not create glare or trespass or bleed off your sight. So with commercial projects, we do require a photo metrics plan that shows the perimeter of the property and that there are zero-foot candles outside that property line and that they do use full cutoffs. And we are able to approach that. But what we don't have in our code, for example, is a minimum Kelvin or a maximum Kelvin level. And the Kelvin level is about the color of the light. And with LEDs now, you can get a wide range of very bright blue, fairly obnoxious, bright lights. And with a lower Kelvin number, three thousand or less, it's a warmer color. Most of our applicants have been complying with that Kelvin level of three thousand or less voluntarily, but I don't have it in the code to point to and say, see, it is required. So even if we started with something as minimal as that in our lighting code, would be a good first baby step.
But again, the city's going to have to change all the mercury vapor streetlights because they're all six thousand, five thousand Kelvin.
And that's part of the reason why this is hard.
Hard, that's right.
Is that we have to look at, but many of the lighting codes exempt the public light.
Do as, do as I say, not as I do.
Right, right. So there's a way to retroactively move into these codes as well. The next one is, actually came out of a city council woman who was on council many years ago. And this is environmental assessment phase one requirement for accepting easements or public property in the city. I really don't think we have a high risk of having environmental assessments done unless it's in a particular area that we think could be, have underground tanks or that sort of thing. I don't think it's something that we need to do across the city. I think it's a as-needed type basis.
But we've done that in residential areas where we're going to accept property as being a green area or doing that for people. There's been, those phase ones ordered for that and I know a specific property where it was ordered. So I don't have any problem. So I don't have any problem if you're going to accept it, take, take ownership of it, that you have that, that's not a terribly expensive thing to do. That's all.
So we can, we can look at it on a as-needed type basis. And the last one was put on here to consider allowing off-highway vehicles on certain city streets. I think that will generate a lot of controversy and I'm not sure that that's something we really want to look, which is why it's in the very low and the very hard category.
What happens is, is that Cripple Creek and Victor allow it. There's one other, so there's three cities. If you have, if you have an ATV like a, like a Ranger Polaris with a blade on the front of it, they normally set it up on streets that don't, can't be more than 30 or 45 miles an hour so that in the wintertime, you can plow snow and do that kind of stuff. But I know Cripple Creek and Victor are already have this approved.
They do.
Can I take a look at their?
And a few roads in Teller County where they made sense for trail connections and off-highway use. So I'd like to update this chart with your input at our next meeting. So I want you to just think about it. What would be, what would you eliminate? What would you add? And then we'll go from there. We do believe that the nuisance code is something that we'd really like to move forward, but it is something that we want to have work sessions with city council and also the new city manager coming on board to make sure that we, and that's why we held off doing this, was to wait for a new city manager to come on board and for the right time for council to consider it.
Who prepared this?
Who prepared it? It was a, it was mainly Rick Circa who had put it together and then Eric Disman worked on it. LOR and I gave input. And Erin Smith, our city attorney, has not looked at it in great detail. We have given it to her. We also shared it with our municipal court prosecutor, Bob Vopee. And now we have a new prosecutor and we just shared it with her yesterday. So.
There are just some things in here that need to be changed before it's all done. That's all.
Well, that's why.
We're calling grass clippings and things that have comp close piles refuge and they're not. Ashes, like potash for the soil. I mean, there's just some things here that somebody, we've got to do some, some modification to, that's all.
I did receive an email from a citizen also who had heard about the board of adjustments comments about the double frontage setbacks and consideration for that. And she was interested in, her lot has a double rear and was also interested in us providing maybe some variations administratively for rear yard setbacks. So I just wanted to throw that out to you as well. So as you're going through all these things, be sure and think about what you believe we should be spending our time on. And then the last thing I have, I'll let Jerry take the top one and pass these down. This is our annual exercise for looking at the priorities of the comprehensive plan. And on top are, is last year's memo to the city council and the city manager. And this information is included in the budget each year, so they do receive it. And it is, I think, an important exercise for this group to provide your input. And then I know Vicki and Lee, you haven't been through this exercise, or Vicki has once. Yep, Lee, this will be new to you. And so these are all the priority action items, the one-to-two-year, the three-to-five-year and the six-year out of the comprehensive plan. Many of them have been accomplished and they will be noted in the status column. So what we do is you get to pick your top, usually we do 15. I was kind of thinking that maybe you could narrow it down to 12 this year. 10?
10's good.
10. Pick your top 10. They don't have to be ranked. We're just going to, and then at the next work session, and I'm thinking probably the first meeting in August, we do have a new case on August 9th. And if it doesn't go too long, we'll have some time to discuss your priorities. So from today to August 9th, go ahead and do your exercise of pick your top 10 and then we'll collate them at the next meeting. Any questions about that? Okay. You have your homework.
Anything else? Anybody else for the good of the order? We'll talk about it. Okay. Not, no need to motion to adjourn. Reports, do you have any?
I just wanted to mention that our next meeting, July 26th, will be canceled. We have no business or items, so you can take that evening off. And as I mentioned, August 9th, we do have a new case. This is the assisted living facility, the new one that is opening. They have completed their new building, almost. Soon will be open. And they had planned for a second building that now they are going to slight, change the location to that. So you're going to see the new site plan and an amendment to the original conditional use on August 9th.
Anybody got reports on the group here? Anything you want to report? Not motion to adjourn would be entertained. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're good. You know, I got it. The animal thing, okay? Wildlife. When it got really dry and then we finally got some rain about a week ago, my wife has got one of these pincher, pitcher pump wells in the front yard that recirculates it. It's going through six gallons of water a day. Six gallons. It's got a leak. We took it out, put it in the garage, filled it up. Animals were drinking six gallons of water a day. I'm going to continue, soon as the rain came, stop. I'm going to continue to feed them water. Yeah. We're going to continue to do that. If that's luring an animal, then come and find me. Because that's just water for them.